October 10, 23. My name is Marty Aiken. I'm the chairman. The vice chairman is over there. Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Hamel, Mr. Chin, Mr. Franco, and Mr. O'Brien, board members, our clerk, Mrs. Noonan, and the director of inspection services, Mr. Conley. Do you have a cellphone or a pager? Please don't vibrate assignment. Yeah. Is that blank?
Yep. Blank.
Mr. O'Brien, it's a good band. Can we make a motion to waive?
I can make a motion to approve or waive the reading of the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of September 26, 2023.
Second. On the motion, stand down all in favor.
Aye.
Oh, someone. We can't lose that. I think it goes to 54 Spring Street.
Good evening.
Uh, Jack Milgram for a variance special permit flood plan to construct a single family home on the existing open lot, premises number 754 Spring Street. The afternoon representative there. Counselor, you're up.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, our members for the record, my name is Attorney Jack P. Milgram. I represent the applicant, Young Deng Chen. To my left is the applicant, Mr. Young Deng Chen. As you've heard, we have before the board this evening an application for certain dimensional variances as well as special permit flood plan for 54 Spring Street here in the city of Quincy. By way of background, as you're probably aware, some five years ago, I appeared for some members of this board with a prior applicant for the same address and for the most part the same relief. The date of that decision appears to be January 10, 2018. And what the board heard at that time was that historically, there was a single family home on this lot. It was actually owned by the family of Margaret LaFerris, the former Ward 1 city councillor. That single family home had fallen into disrepair and had been torn down. It was intended, the applicant at that time, to build a new single family home. And after several hearings and revision of plans, the variances that were requested at that time were granted. That applicant at that time apparently decided not to go ahead and build a single family home, and instead she sold the lot to my client. As a result of COVID, there were some delays in regards to moving forward with what this gentleman would like to do. But now we're here. His intention is also to build a single family home on this lot. As my understanding is, it's going to have four bedrooms. It's going to have two bathrooms. Right now, the lot is just there. So the intention would be, obviously, to clean up the lot, restore it to what the historical use has been, which is a single family home, which would be similar in character to other homes on that street. I had opportunity a few weeks ago myself to do a drive-by of that lot. And in that part of Spring Street, there are a bunch of homes run after the yellow. And this one will go in where the open lot is and what was there before. I'm not quite sure why it wasn't 2018 that weren't requested at that time to request a special permit for the flood plan. Be it as it may, the special services made that request this time. So that's one thing that's different. In addition, when we take a look at the plans, there's some paving in the front which exceeds 20 feet. So I understand that there's a variance that's required for that, which is different than what we requested in 2018. Other than that, for the most part, regards to the variances, the relief is the same.
Do you go through each one of them, which you want? Because there's been board members here and there's people here that don't know. No, before you do, wait a minute. Mr. Chin, could you swear in the audience, please? Anyone that's going to speak tonight, could you please stand up and raise your right hand? If you are going to speak or want to speak, or if you might speak, just take an oath. Because if you don't take an oath, you can't speak. Clear right now. How many people are on? One, two? Okay. Three?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matters now in hearing? Yes, thank you.
All right, Counselor.
Thank you. Taking a look at the application summary form, which I have, section three, description of proposed work. It indicates proposed use, one family, single family home. Then brief description of proposed work. And it references variances for minimum lot size, minimum lot width, minimum side yards, minimum front yard setback, height from average grade, and paving of front yard exceeding 20 feet in width from the proposed construction of the single family home on the existing open lot. In addition, as I've mentioned this evening, apparently the property is located in an AE flood zone. As a result, a special permit for construction within that flood zone is required. The zoning licenses, the sections that are involved are 4.1.1, 4.1.2.5, 5.1.4.1, and 8.1.9. And as indicated in the summary that we filed here, it just simply, as I've already indicated, both single family home and existing open lot. And that's what we're asking the board to consider this evening. My client is here to answer any specifics that anyone has pertaining to what he intends to go with.
Now, how's the same size? Correct, 36 by 29?
Yes.
Same, same exact size property?
Yes.
All right. Why do you need, why do you need a driveway to go 36 or whatever it is, 30, through, what is this, 52 feet paving? Is that all paved?
So it's putting raised patio and put the two cars under the raised patio. So the longer side facing the ocean. So if it has a big drop-off from the, you know, rocks to the ledges, so raised patio makes the whole lot flat and safe for occupants. So under the raised patio, so intent to put the two cars in there. And the width of the two doors, I think it's about 20 feet. So for that, just for the safety, you know, it's impossible, you know, exceeding 20 feet.
But what are you looking for paving? The exact amount here. I'm trying to find this quick.
So the paving, paving would be from the, you know, the parking space to the street. And has had to be depicted in the drawing, the door for, you know, acting as a garage door under the raised patio. Each one is 10 feet. So that means that there's a section like about 1.5 feet, like 2 feet or 3 feet, would be paved, like, you know, 10 feet plus 20 feet, so that's about 20 feet.
So you're filling in, in the back with, with walls, correct? Concrete walls?
On the backside?
Yeah.
On the backside?
By the ocean side.
By the ocean side. On the front, it'll probably be concrete.
Two concrete walls?
Yeah, probably.
Steps going up?
Yes.
Now you got parking under there?
Right.
All right. What are you having for ground out there for parking?
The ground currently is having some section here at the street level. There's a part larger section here that was left.
Rocks?
Yes. So some of those are rocks.
Then you want the paving upstairs on Spring Street? How, how many feet are we talking?
On the, on the Spring Street side, it's 20 feet, but probably with access to the small doorway, so by the, 23, 24 feet. Then here's a tiny little door next to the.
I mean, what, what I'm seeing from, from, the house is 36 feet wide?
Yes.
One second. Any, any questions? Got any questions? Mr. Hamel?
No questions. This is bad.
Mr. Chin?
I hope you sure have questions. I have a series of questions about all of these different requested conditions, but not in general yet.
All right. Same.
Clarification. We're looking at five parking places. Two in a garage underneath, two in an apron prior to the garage, and one up top.
Five. Two up top, right? How long?
Two on the facing the ocean side.
Yeah.
Under the raised patio.
Yeah.
And one on the Spring Terrace side.
Just three?
Yes, three.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
One minute.
One of the patio.
Yeah, I know. And then one up there. But. Here it is.
How is this?
So up top, you're going to have a 13-foot driveway to, on Spring Street?
Yes.
Marty, I get a question. I'm sorry. So I'm looking at this. This is Spring Terrace, not Spring Street.
Yes.
So that's where the one parking space is.
Yes.
All right. Anything else, guys? Not right now. Right now? Okay. You can have a seat. Is there anyone here want to speak in favor? First call? Second call?
I do.
Line up. Name and address for the record, please.
How's it going today?
Good. How are you?
Good. My name's Steve Dalton. I live at 37 Spring Street. A couple houses out from this property.
Yep.
I always say that if you don't want to live in the city, then you should go out in the country. People have the right to build. You need housing to live. This piece of land has been there. I've been there now six years. It's sitting there. It looks ugly. Rodents hang out there. There's been a house there before. I think this gentleman should have the right to build another house there. Okay? Anything else besides that, I think is just not being fair to the person who owns the property. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Come in, anyone else? Second call? Third call? Call up, I'm getting close. And the letter here is written to the DPW.
Two, Marty Aiken, chairman of zoning board of appeals, from Chang Sang Civil Engineers, September 15, 2354 Spring Street, case number ZBA-23-54. We reviewed the submitted for above reference project, and our comments is the following. Number one, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to development. Two, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Three, install a cleanout for sewer service and 1-inch water service with valve and box. Four, will there be any fill or change of grade due to development? Five, on completion of project as built plan, showing all utilities building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. Elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property is in the flood zone. Further information is required, please advise.
Call up, I'm getting close. Anyone opposed, go inside? First call? Second call? Step forward. Name and address for the record.
Hello. I'm Ali Malvesti, representing 54 Spring Street.
Your address?
My address is 60 Green Tree Ave.
Okay.
We're not opposed to building a house. We're worried about the scale of the house and parking, and most importantly, the construction of the house. How are they digging into the rock? And what vibration or damage is going to happen to the houses around it? So that's really our.
You can, like, that, you can have, we can, we can send out and take pictures of your house. And if anything's wrong, ask them, their insurance would pay, contractors.
And you would, the city would do that? Or we?
We can ask. We can put it on the record to have the houses next door within 300 feet.
Okay.
And, because they are, they got sleds, there's everything. I don't know how much they're going to take. I'll, I'll ask them that, too. Thank you. Anything else? I'm sorry. Is there anything else? No? Okay. Step forward. Name and address for the record, please.
Gail Davidson. I live at 140 Spring Street. And just that area of Spring Street is so congested. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure, and it's, that's where the hill is. I don't know if you're familiar with it. But it just, I don't know how far it's going to extend into the street, this, how many foot long driveway? That's really concerning. And where it is a flood zone, I don't think there should be that many variances. I think the house should be a bit smaller, maybe.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Please step up. Name and address for the record.
Gail Davidson. I live at 140 Spring Street. And just that area of Spring Street is so congested. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure, and it's, that's where the hill is. I don't know if you're familiar with it. But it just, I don't know how far it's going to extend into the street, this, how many foot long driveway? That's really concerning. And where it is a flood zone, I don't think there should be that many variances. I think the house should be a bit smaller, maybe.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Please step up. Name and address for the record.
Steve Curry, 66 Spring Street. I'm directly across the street from this property. Been there 15 years. Again, we agree there. We would love to see a home there. We really would. But yeah, that's a choke point on that street. It's a blind hill. So parking's one. Also, the height on this building. How tall is this going to be? We, my house is already in a shadow. I don't need two shadows. So we would feel we'd be almost boxed in as homeowners. So it'd be nice to see a home within code and fits, fits neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kimberly Dong Breen. I live on 20 Spring Terrace. Have been there for a little over five years. And I just want to echo the same concerns that our neighbors here have been saying. Absolutely want to see a home in this area, but one that fits the scale. Being in a flood zone is a concern. That driveway also a concern. There's a lot of young children living on our street, a lot of pedestrians, people walking dogs, just the high traffic, just curious and concerned about that. And so just wanting to see that it be of proper scale.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
This is 40-plus.
Mary McLean, representing 52 Spring Street. So it is within.
Can I have your address, please?
Sure. 22 St. Anne's Road.
Thank you.
It is within 300 feet of 52, so I am concerned about the height of it and being shadowed out. Spring Street now has become, it's, the street itself has become very busy, and it goes up, up the hill there, and it's a blind spot. So the height of the house is my concern with, because there's, there's a lot of UPS trucks and FedEx trucks that now go that way. Google sends them that way. GPS sends them that way. So the street is really tight. On Spring Terrace is very tight, and then Spring Street behind it is very tight. So that's just my concern, representing 52, just the scale of it.
Very good. Name and some clear. Anyone else? Second call? Third call? Call up, I'm getting close. No, I won't. I will leave that, I was going to give it open. I got a letter here from the counselor that has concerns about the height of the house. Actually, be ready for the record.
CD Quincy, inspection services.
Oh, he's silent. So we spoke here. The counselor has, where's the counselor's letter? Oh, you got an email? It's an email. So there's two letters there. Bring, and cover you there, and spoke, so I'm not going to put them in the record. An email just came in from.
David McCarthy to Kathy Noonan, zoning board of appeals. Dear board, due to conflict tonight, I will not be in attendance. My biggest concern, the size of the house on the lot which was brought forward 2017. The lot again is unique, and I want to make sure the size fits the neighborhood. If you go forward, several variances are requested. The size of the structure concerns me as it is very tight neighborhood. Sincerely, David McCarthy, Ward 1 Counselor.
Okay. Call up, I'm getting close now. I have concerns about the height of the building. You're going to need some variances up there, a lot small. House going to have to be built there. I get that. But my suggestion would be meet with the counselor. Come up with something these two can agree with. But I'm only one vote, so I'll let the other one speak. But the way it's written now, I would say no. It's a little too high, a little too much ass for that lot.
I think the current request, the height is concerning, 40 feet. It's also a large home. That's my concern.
Likewise, you do have listed 40 feet, Attorney Milgram, but the drawings, as my, as my brother pointed out, would say 58 feet in height. And it's quite, it's quite a difference. There are other issues here. The frontage width with 25 feet variance. So zero feet setback on the side. Seems like a bit. So I would, I would like to see a different set of drawings if I consider voting for it.
I hear. Hey, Mr. Chin?
Yet to see it. I had to blow this up to see it, but the roof peak, that 58.5 feet? Am I reading that right? So here and here?
So that the street having huge deltaing elevation.
Yeah. So what is that for median elevation?
So the median elevation, yes, I think it's from the finish of the site, it should be like 40, what's it, 35 feet?
45?
35. When, when the site is finished, it should be like 35 feet.
35.
Yeah. 35 from the block. Because.
Yeah.
Because the Spring Street is about 30 feet lower than Spring Terrace. So from the Spring Street side, it could be very tall. But from Spring Terrace side, it's just a normal house. That's one half.
Thank you. Anything else?
I declare, I mean, I think probably with the counselor and the neighbors, you probably want to sit down and have a conversation.
Something's going to fit in that neighborhood?
Huh?
Something's going to fit in that neighborhood. The second, the second.
It's a little bit compared to everything else that's down there.
It is. And it's a tough lot. The, the lot there.
Appreciate it.
I mean, you've all been there. You've seen it. It's like, you come around there, it's, I mean, there was, people do have some rights there, and they spoke them tonight, so I'm going to adhere to what they're asking to. Let's get, let's get a house in there that fits a little better.
Has to be continued for a month. Give me a chance, talk to the council.
Sounds great. Month. We'll be back here November 28th. November 28th. November 28th. Everyone hear that? November 28th, we'll be back. And I, I hope your, your congressman, you let us know that they spoke with you and met with you and met with the council, and we all can come up with something that's, you probably aren't going to agree on everything, but he is building a new house. He's got to get something, too. We hope we all agree on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Prove a motion, please.
Make a motion to continue ZBA-23-54 to 1128, 2023.
Second. On the motion? Stand down all in favor?
Aye.
Both, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Water Street's here.
Water Street? Water Street here?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to call you next, so someone can go home and, someone can stay.
Tag.
Yeah, one second. My paper. Are you going to take it? Someone took this? I gave it away? No? All right. Water Street. STR 2310, in Tai Vu for a special permit to operate a short-term rental business on the premises number 383 Water Street. Is he up? Been a representative here?
Good evening. My name is Dean Hee Vu, but please just call me Jenny. I live at 383 Water Street with my two young children. One is nine-years-old daughters.
Three years?
383 Water Street. I live in that street with my two young children. One is nine-years-old daughters and one is three-years-old son. I own 383 dash 385 Water Street, Quincy, with my husband. The property is loan business B. I'm here to ask the board grant me permission to do the short-term rental at 385 Water Street. I must first apologize to the board and the city for having rented this property out without the proper permits for short-term rental. In 2021, I actually started the process for an approval through the city website, including sending notice to all of the abuders by certified mail. I thought that I was approved after that. But when I received a notice of violation from the city, I realized that I was wrong. After doing some research and getting some assistance, I learned from my mistake. I paid for the fine. I stopped and removed the property for rent from all the rental services and websites and prepared for this paper as required. I have built this property completely new since 2017, and I'm very proud of it. I'm sure you all have seen the work that I have done and that I keep property in a very nice condition. Simcovis caused me to lose most of my business. Then for 385 Water Streets have provided income that I use to support my family and pay my bills. I live in this property full-time, and I'm available to deal with any issues that arise. The property has security cameras on all sides. Motion sensor lies all around the house and the parking lot. A noise-aware app and the sensors are monitoring the apartment. I have a large parking lot with one space for me and two space for the rentals. I will not be renting the room individually, but the entire apartment. I try to rent to families. Rentals would come through Airbnb, verbal, or other online websites that provide verified and reliable occupants. I have rented this apartment since it was repaired, and I haven't never received any complaint or concern from my neighbors. I'm very protective of my children's and will not tolerate noise or other problems from rentals. The property has a large rock wall behind the parking lot to the right and my units on the left. This will give the good cushions between the rental units and my neighbors. I hope you will forgive me for my mistake renting out without the approval first and allow me to do the short-term rental permits, short-term rental from now on. Thank you so much for your consideration and listening.
Thank you. Your address again? Did you say it was 380?
383.
You live at 382.
Yes.
I thought you said 380. I'm trying to say, why are you living across the street? That was my one question.
Who plants all those flowers?
Thank you. I have flowers. That's why.
It's a nice-looking property. It's.
It shows good shape of the property. I have no questions.
It shows. The property is in good shape, and, and I looked up some reviews. It's got a stellar rating, a ton of rentals, so I was shocked.
All right. And I'll be going in favor.
In favor?
Do you want to take any testimony? Or do we have to? Do we have to take any?
Yeah. I don't think anyone's here, but anyway, let me ask. Anyone here want to speak in favor? It was my fault.
No worries.
Second?
You can put me down. I'm in favor.
All right. Put Johnny down. He's in favor.
Drive me a quick.
That was one of the nicest applicants ever.
There you go.
We're lucky you live in Quincy.
I got a letter here from the DPW. They have reviewed the case and have no comments. Anyone opposed, we're undecided. First call? Second call? Third call? Close. Name and motion, please.
Make a motion, STR-23-10, in Tai Vu, for special permit to operate short-term rental business on the premises number 383 Water Street, Quincy, Massachusetts.
Second. On the motion? Stand down all in favor?
Aye.
Both, so move. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Brother on tonight's business, ZBA 2366. Thank you, favor.
You out?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Are you out? Who's out? Mr. Chin?
Yeah.
Chin's out.
There you go.
Mr. Ray Dell is back.
Aye. Okay.
Come up with something these two can agree with. But I'm only one vote, so I'll let the other one speak. But the way it's written now, I would say no, it's a little too high, a little too much ass for that lot.
I think the current request, the height is concerning 40 feet. It's also a large home. That's my concern.
Likewise, you do have listed 40 feet, attorney, but the drawings, as my, my brother pointed out, would say 58 feet in height. And it's quite, it's quite a difference. There are other issues here, the frontage width, with 25 feet variance. It's so zero feet setback on the side, seems like a bit. So I would, I would like to see a different set of drawings if I consider holding.
I hear. Hey, Ms. Chair.
Yet to see, I had to blow this up to see it, but the roof peak, that 58.5 feet? Am I reading that right? So here and here?
So that, that spring tree having huge delta in elevation.
Yeah, I, I, so what is that for median elevation?
So the median elevation, yes, I think it's from the finish on the side, it should be like 45. What's it by feet?
45?
45. When, when the site is finished, they should be like 45 feet.
35.
Yeah, 45 from the ground. Because. Because the Spring Street is about 17 feet of more than Spring Terrace. So from the Spring Street side, it's probably very tall. But from Spring Terrace side, it's just a normal house. So I'm happy.
Thank you. Anything else?
I declare, I mean, I think probably with the counselor and the neighbors, you'll probably want to sit down and have a conversation.
Something that's going to fit in that neighborhood.
Huh?
Something that's going to fit in that neighborhood. Just the second, the second.
It's a little big compared to everything else that's down there.
It is. And it's a tough lot. The, the lot there.
Appreciate it.
I mean, you've all been there, you've seen it. It's like, you come around there, it's, I mean, there was, people do have some rights there and they spoke them tonight, so I'm going to adhere to what they're asking to. Let's get, let's get a house in there that fits a little better.
Has to be continued for a month. Give me a chance to talk to the council.
Sounds great. Month, we'll be back here November 28th. November 28th. November 28th. Everyone hear that? November 28th, we'll be back. And I, I hope you, you come and you let us know that they spoke with you and met with you and met with the council and we all can come up with something that's, you probably aren't going to agree on everything, but he is building a new house. He's got to get something too. We hope we all agree on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Break a motion, please.
Make a motion to continue ZBA-23-54 to 1128 2023.
Second. On the motion? See any of them in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Water Street's here.
Water Street. Water Street here?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to call you next, so someone can go home and someone can stay.
Tag.
Yeah, one second. My paper, I need to take it. Someone took this. I, I gave it away. All right, Water Street. STR 2310, in Taiwu for a special permit to operate a short-term rental business on the premises number 383 Water Street. Is the app done or representative here?
Good evening. My name is Ting Tiu, but please just call me Jenny. I live at 383 Water Street with my two young children. One is nine-years-old daughters and one. 383 Water Street. I live in that street with my two young children. One is nine-years-old daughters and one is three-years-old son. I own 383-385 Water Street Quincy with my husband. The property is loan business B. I'm here to ask the board grant me permission to do the short-term rental at 385 Water Street. I must first apologize to the board and the city for having rented this property out without the proper permits for short-term rental. In 2021, I actually started the process for an approval through the city website, including sending notice to all of the others by certified mail. I thought that I was approved after that. But when I received a notice of violation from the city, I realized that I was wrong. After doing some research and getting some assistance, I learned from my mistake. I paid for the fine. I stopped and removed the property for rent from all the rental services and websites and prepared for this paper as required. I have built this property completely new since 2017 and I'm very proud of it. I'm sure you all have seen the work that I have done and that I keep property in a very nice condition. Simcovis caused me to lose most of my business. Then for 385 Water Streets have provided income that I use to support my family and pay my bills. I live in this property full-time and I'm available to deal with any issues that arise. The property has security cameras on all sides. Motion sensor lies all around the house and the parking lot. A noise-aware app and the sensors are monitoring the apartment. I have a large parking lot with one space for me and two space for the rentals. I will not be renting the room individually, but the entire apartment. I try to rent to families. Rentals would come through Airbnb, verbal or other online websites that provide verified and reliable occupants. I have rented this apartment since it was repaired and I haven't never received any complaint or concern from my neighbors. I'm very protective of my children's and will not tolerate noise or other problem from rentals. The property has a large rock wall behind the parking lot to the right and my units on the left. This will give the good cushions between the rental units and my neighbors. I hope you will forgive me for my mistake renting out without the approval first and allow me to do the short-term rental permits, short-term rental from now on. Thank you so much for your consideration and listening.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Your address again, did you say it was 380?
383.
You live at 383. I thought you said 380. I'm trying to say why you're a little across the street. That was my one question.
Who plants all those flowers?
Thank you. I have flowers, that's why.
It's a nice-looking property. It's.
That shows the show with the property. I have no questions.
She is.
The property is in good shape. And I looked up some reviews. They've got a stellar rating, a ton of rentals, so I was shocked.
All right.
And I'll be voting in favor.
In favor? Do you want to take any testimony or do we have to? Do we have to take any?
Yeah.
Opposition.
I don't think anyone's here, but anyway, let me ask. Anyone here want to speak in favor? Was my fault.
No worries.
Second?
You can put me down. I'm in favor.
Put Johnny down, he's in favor.
John made it quick.
That was one of the nicest applicants ever.
There you go.
We're lucky you live in Quincy.
I got a letter here from the DPW. They have reviewed the case and have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. Name and motion, please.
Make a motion, STR-23-Dan Din Tai Wu, for special permit to operate short-term rental business on the premises numbered 383 Water Street, Quincy, Massachusetts.
Second.
On the motion, see any of them in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Further on its next business, ZBA 2366.
You out?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, out.
Are you out? Who's out? Ms. Chin?
Yeah.
Chin's out.
There you go.
Mr. Ray Dell is back.
That way you don't have to read anything. I'm playing musical chairs.
Stay where you are.
We want to make sure John has, it can read well.
To demolish the existing structure and building, new two-story, single-family home, two-vehicle garage, a 10-foot deck and a six-foot balcony in the same footprint on the premise number 108 Albatross Road. The app saying representative is here. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Manuel Paiva. I am the project designer and represent the owner, Mr. Long Lee, who is present tonight. My address is 20 Varsity Place in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. The scope of work, as mentioned, is to demolish the existing one-and-a-half-story single-family home with one-stall garage. Driveway is currently accessed from Albatross Road. The proposal is to reconstruct a two-story, single-family dwelling in the same footprint, relocate in the driveway to Swan Road and a two-stall garage underneath. Mr. Lee has resided with the residence for eight years since October of 2015 with his wife and two boys. They have outgrown the home and would like to maintain residency in the same neighborhood. The house was constructed, as you know, in 1950 with some renovations done in 1988 prior to the ownership of the home by Mr. Lee. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming in size. The square footage of the existing lot is 5,519 square feet, where required is 7,650. That's 7,650. So to begin with, we were, we were strapped with the size of the lot. The lot is very narrow but long, approximately 50 by 116 is the width and the length. In the, in the packet, this top plan that I, that I have right here is in the packet. And it clearly gives you the example of what I was talking about with the green area would be the little area. It cuts into the corner line, has two fronts, two sides. So this green area would be what would be able to be built without variance, which gives you about a 12-foot wide, a 78-foot long strip.
Be a nice tiny one.
And on that overlay, I also showed the balconies, the porch, the deck and the house to give you a point of reference. The house is currently four-bedroom. The proposal is four-bedroom. So we're here in front of you tonight for relief as follows. The front yard setback off of Albatross Road is 18.4 to the existing home. 25 is required. We're asking the board to allow us to maintain that 18.4 to the front of the home, the deck and the balcony. The second variance we're in here is on Swan Road, the second front. 25-foot setback is required. We're at 20.8 to the balcony. We're asking for that as our second variance. The third variance is the side yard setback along the Swan roadside of 6.5 is what is existing. We're proposing to keep that right on the line at 6.5. In the packet, I also provided some photographs to give you a good feeling of what that 6.5 looks like. And the last variance is the width of the driveway, where 20 feet is required or maximum. We're at 25. And the reason we did that is this side of the ground will have the two saw. We just came straight down with the pavement to match the width of the house with the two saws. The architecture will not diminish the neighborhood. The 6.5 feet is the, the closest setback which is existing to remain. And where the driveway would be eliminated on Albatross Road will be replaced with landscaping. And that is my presentation. And I have the full set of plans here and the owner, if there's any questions from the board.
So you're bringing the driveway 25 foot across because of the building?
Yes, so that side of the building, if you could see right here. This would be that view. There would be an 18-foot door. We just came straight out. And again, to two hours, two cars would be popped down that driveway.
I can anyway, but 20 feet, you can pop two cars.
In front as well.
Huh?
They said in front as well.
In front as well.
Gives two, two additional cars off the street.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm not at all. I'm just saying 20 is, 20 is enough. And I know why you did it, but.
Or existing foundation, is how we try to use an existing foundation.
No, it will be a new foundation in the same spot. And that's where we got the 25 foot running.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then we were just going to come down with the slope of the driveway.
I gotta say, I like your presentation.
Yeah.
You got a great voice.
She's like a voice for the radio, you know? I was like. Getting weirder around here, I guess, I don't know.
It's end of the year.
Those are my main questions and I still got, I want to see what the neighbors have to say, but.
It's a nice design though.
Damn.
I have no questions at this time.
Fine.
Yeah, I mean, I have no questions. I think they've done a lot with, you know, with a small area, what they have to work in. And I think they respect the places in and around there, you know? Like the height isn't crazy.
No.
Cars are off the street, there's additional cars off the street. And I know you have a truck for work, I saw that when I drove by.
Yeah, I was just saying, we've done a, done a lot with what you have here.
Yeah, I mean, it's not perfect.
Not nothing is.
All right.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? All right, party hearing closed. I got a letter here from the DPW. We see this middle, we have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call? All right, party hearing closing.
Yeah, and I don't know what else.
It's just that, you know, it, the only thing that I think when you have 25 foot running that way, and again, it's the side of the house, it makes, it just makes it look so big in the corner. Anyone else is with me? I mean, you're not.
You're talking about coming, would you rather have them coming towards the street this way?
No, I'd rather shrink it.
Narrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just because of the width. When, when you go around the file like that and see all that tar, that, that, that extra amount of tar is just going to make, make it look bigger than it is. That's, that's all I'm thinking for a neighbor. Neighbors.
I don't know, I'd rather have it say, a two car, I mean, what are you going to do?
No, no, no. That's what I'm saying. It, it, it's just looks. It's really not, it's the aesthetics of it that makes it look, helps not look as big.
Oh, that's what favors it. I don't know, from the way he keeps his house.
I'm not even up to that. That might keep it, it's sliding down.
From the way he kept his house, I think he cares about the appearance.
Oh, he does, that's for sure, no question.
So I'm, I'm not worried about it.
I have no questions.
All right, good.
No, second, have a motion, please, man.
Okay. ZBA-23-66, ran it all favor for variance. To demolish the existing structure, build a new two-story, single-family home with two-vehicle garage, a 10-foot deck, a six-foot balcony in the same footprint on the premise numbered 108 Albatross Road, Quincy, Massachusetts.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, second.
On the motion? See any of them in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so move. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further on its next agenda. We have one more, do you know? Seven, right? Howl Towns, for special permit to operate a short-term rental business on the premises number 266 Grant. The app saying representative is here. Name and address for the record.
Helen Terim, 266 Grant Street, Quincy.
Okay.
And good evening. This is very exciting. This is our first.
Name and address for the record.
Mahmuk Terim. This is my wife, Pellet Terim.
You still live at 266? Just wondering.
There's an Airbnb downstairs.
So we are here because we applied for a special permit for short-term rental in our property at 266 Grant Street. And we would like to give you a brief explanation and reasons why we are pursuing this kind of, this type of rental agreement.
Yep.
So our house is in residency district and it, which is a two-family house. We are living on, living on the first floor, which is that one-bedroom unit. And we just moved in, in July 1st, I guess, and this is our first home. Hopefully, it's not going to be the last.
Hear it that, right?
So why we are looking to have like short-term rental agreement? Because we have like a couple of reasons for that. The most important reason for us to have available space for families and friends because our families live abroad and they visit three, four times a year, as many as possible.
Do you charge them double?
Don't charge them. They are always out. So we would like to keep the spaces available for them. Whenever the plane tickets are cheaper, we book tickets. So it doesn't like flexi, I mean, it's flexible, the travel times. So we would like to keep the availability for them. And the second reason, we have a passion for traveling and having people over and like connecting with the new people and culture. So short-term rentals allows that like new people comes in and checks out. So we would like to have that kind of relationships and cultural exchanges because not always people living in Boston visits. People come from all around the world. And also, the third reason is access for maintenance. So we just bought the house, so we don't want to rent it for long term because you are not able to like get up, I mean, get in the unit and fix the, you know, or keep it clean as, as much as we want because people are, I mean, the cleanness.
That's the reason I'm going, yes, right there, because of that. You taking care of that place and you care about.
Yes.
So a short-term rental, like a year, you won't get in that house for a year if you're renting out for a year.
Right.
You know what happens to your house?
Right. So we would like to have that accessibility for our units all the time.
All right.
And we are looking, I mean, we are going to be managing that, so it's going to be additional income for us to pay our mortgage as well. This is another point. So we would like to get the permits as soon as possible and we'll start doing that.
Any questions?
Nope. No.
None.
No, good.
Great, you can have a seat. Does anyone want to speak? First, second time, third time closed. Lot up here from the DPW. We have reviewed the above project and don't have any comments. Thank you. Please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call done, no one's here. On the motion, please.
The motion, STR-23-7, Pellet Terim, special permit to operate a short-term rental business on the premise numbered 266 Grant Street, Quincy. But I have a motion.
Seconding. On the motion, see any of them in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Motion adjourned?
You motioned twice.
All favor?